Oklahoma City Council Meeting for Monday, August 1st to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield. O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second at discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, that motion does carry. Next we have the consent items, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on today's consent agenda, we have for council's approval the City Council minutes of July 18th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of July 25th, Planning Commission minutes of July 6th, Rice Hospital Board minutes of March 9th and June 1st, accounts payable report for July 14th through July 25th, a resolution to approve the Blizzard or Warhawks lease and advertising agreements, temporary street sidewalk closure for power plant demolition, council's acceptance, a police commission minutes of February 7th, and for council's information, an application for appointment to the Planning Commission of Kelsey Vasika, and a thank you to the Public Works Department.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second at discussion.
I'd like to add, I'm number B, letter B.
You'd like to pull B?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien wishes to pull item B. So with the exception of item B, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
That resolution passes. Councilmember O'Brien.
I was asked to enter this into the, some of the minutes of the meeting that we took at MPU, Minnesota Public Utilities. It says, "As a result of the study, a series of four water rate adjustments have been recommended. The water rate increase recommendations would be 20% in 2023, 20% in 2024, 20% in 2025, and 5% in 2026. The water increases are necessitated by the need for significant capital improvements, including construction of a new water treatment plant, Northeast Water Treatment Plant. In 2023, replacement of aging water mains and so reconstruction of streets. These rate adjustments are necessary to ensure continued financial strength of the water division. These rates will start January 1st, 2023."
So you're asking that to be added to?
The minutes?
It is in.
It was in there.
It's in there.
Hmm? It was in the minutes.
Okay, he, John just asked me to bring it forward during the meeting, so.
So are you moving that forward as a motion then?
Yes.
Okay, there's a second. Motion made in second at discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Just a minute, please. Councilmember Nelson.
Just seeking clarification, that is stated exactly, has he read it in the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
As they are, so it's a separate motion from the minutes?
No, he's making a motion to file the minutes for Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of July 25th.
Okay, sorry.
Continue with roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven i's, zero n's.
That, that motion, motion or resolution?
Motion.
At this point it would be a motion, correct?
Motion.
A motion passes. Next we have open forum. We have Mr. Kelly Welch, who wishes to speak to the council. Mr. Welch, please state your name, address, I'm sorry, state your name and whether you reside in the city or outside of the city, and then you have three minutes and our timekeeper will get things going, and after she hits her magic button over there, you'll actually see it pop up, same as the rest of us do, but don't let it surprise you because there's a loud alarm and a buzz up there that happens when you get over to three minutes, so.
You know how much I like to talk.
Right, you keep talking, right?
My name is Clarence Kelly Welch. I live at 1304 23rd Street, Southeast Wilmer, Minnesota, and, Mr. Mayor and council members, talking to you about, and talking to you about what is on your screen, that's the neighborhood that I live in, and this 23rd Street runs from the Holiday Inn Casey area, south to Wilmer Avenue, and this area has been an area of concern for the residents who live in this association. This is the Sunrise, the state's association you see here, and it's not up to date quite with, as far as the names are concerned, there's two or three that are changed. They're concerned about vehicular traffic that's traveling too fast, and we'd like to, some measure to be taken to reduce the traffic, the speed of the traffic in this, at least in this stretch. The excessive speed in the location makes the street and the walking paths unsafe for pedestrians. We're disappointed that the extension of the existed, existing parking lot and for the football, baseball field was not, was dropped. We hope that people will be able to get off the street. You'll see what I'm talking about there in a second. Matter of fact, I'll start showing you some pictures. This is the area right at the top of that map, and it shows you that the only place you have to walk in this area is on the street, except on the walking paths. This path is one that, and I'll go back to that, the path, it's this area, the white area that runs right next to the baseball diamond and goes up to the, to the right-hand side of your screen. We can walk on that. However, the, this, once you get back to the street, there's no place to cross the street, not a pedestrian crosswalk in the area. This is the crosswalk that goes from the area of my house, that you can see is 1304 on the left-hand side, near the top of that list there. There's not a sign available, no signs at all. That means that the people in the area are starting to assume that they can drive on it with cars, and they are doing so. They're driving on it with four-wheelers, they're driving on it with golf carts, and very often there's people on there with bicycles and so on when people are coming in that way. We'd like, we'd like some signage in that area for the walking path, and I met with Mr. Ganser the other day, and we talked about this. That area that she's standing at in the middle of the path right now is city property to the end of the little fence on your right-hand side. That's the culvert that goes, the ditch that goes through the back of our property. There are motorized, no motorized vehicles over by the baseball diamond, and there are no signs like that on the footpath that goes to the grade school. There's only, when you come off of the one by the baseball diamond, and still is only one place to walk, and that is on the street.
Thank you for your comments. Three minutes goes pretty fast.
Three minutes? It can't be right. I'll just go through the pictures.
So work with our Public Works Director and our Police Chief on this.
Will do.
And also our City Administrator, Ms. Valiant. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
You bet.
Now just take my.
Yes.
Take my stuff and go. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You bet, thank you. Next we have a presentation of the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program by HomeServe, and the presentation is being made by Mr. Lyon. Mr. Lyon, pleasure to meet you in person, and I believe you and I spoke on the phone a couple times.
We have, absolutely, and thank you so much for the opportunity to.
And you get more than three minutes, by the way.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, there's lots of good stuff here, so a little more than three minutes will help, and I apologize during the changeover, the monitors may go out. Took a moment for them to come back on last time. And I'll go ahead and, I think you all are able to see this presentation as well, and I think it's included in the packet also. Yeah, it might take the monitors a moment to cooperate, so I apologize for that. Are you able to see anything on your screens at all? Give it just a moment, if that's okay. I mean, while I'm waiting for this to come up, I can basically introduce myself.
It's up now.
All right, no introductions, right, cut to the chase. At any rate, my name is Dennis Lyon, I'm with a company called HomeServe, and we're the administrators of the National League of Cities Service Line Program, which is the only program of its kind that's endorsed by the National League of Cities, as well as, I believe, 20 state leagues now, as well as rural water associations and so on. And our program is one that's been available for over 20 years. We're an accredited Better Business Bureau business with an A-plus rating. We've had the National League of Cities endorsement since 2010, so they gave us their seal of approval quite some time ago, and we still enjoy that. So the reason our program exists is we're addressing, and I heard you speaking about it earlier, the issues of infrastructure. Obviously, those are a big challenge all across the country. If you look at this slide here, rather than go through all this information, I'd just like to point out the grades that were given by the American Society of Civil Engineers. They're going to C minus for drinking water infrastructure, a D plus for wastewater. These are the national grades, of course, some states are a little better, some states are a little worse, but this is where we come in on a national level, and you can see all the billions of dollars that are projected that need to be spent to bring us to where we should be. The reason for our program and the reason why we exist is because obviously that's something that's not only problematic for cities, but it's problematic for homeowners as well. The difference is, when it comes to cities, there's typically money that's, you know, available via grants, built into the budget, utility rates, et cetera, that allow for maintenance and upgrading of those systems on the public side. On the private side, homeowners, even though their lateral lines are subjected to all the same elements as the public lines, they're kind of left to fend for themselves. Part of the issue with that is they typically don't know that those lines on their property, their external water sewer line, are their responsibility until they have an issue, and usually the way they find out is they have a problem, and they call the city, and somebody from the city has to go out and investigate and then deliver that message of, you know, sorry, this is yours to deal with, which makes for a pretty unhappy resident typically. Their next step is usually to call their insurance agent, and they find out that it's not covered by their homeowner's policy, and now they're mad at their insurance agent as well. So it's really not a good experience for that person who's dealing with that issue. So our program could really reduce some of that wasted time and resources on behalf of the city and reduce the frustration of those homeowners as well when they experience those issues. The main point of frustration obviously comes from that last point there of people just not having money set aside to take care of these types of emergencies. So there's that panic that sets in when they know they're going to have an issue that's going to be expensive, where do I get the money from? Excuse me. So the way our program works, and again, this is where we come in, there's absolutely no cost to the city, there are no public funds that are used, and we administer the program completely. So we take care of the marketing, the billing, the claims, the customer service, and also setting up a local area contractor to be our network provider of the service when the work needs to be done. There is an optional revenue share for the city. That is something that ties into homeowner participation, but I want to point out, there's no minimum participation required for our service to be available in any community. Every community where it is available currently, it serves as a free public awareness campaign. What we do is we send information to residents that let them know what their responsibility is, and that there's a program that's available to them that they can use to protect themselves if they choose to do so. It's completely voluntary for them. So we're reaching a lot of people and letting them know that this is their responsibility. For those who choose not to participate, they've still been informed that this is their responsibility, so it's going to reduce the number of calls that the city will receive from people when they have these issues. For the people who choose to participate, what we're providing for them is not just coverage of the issue, not just dollar amounts, but we're providing the service as well. When they have the problem, they call us. Our call center's in Chattanooga, Tennessee, it's staffed 24 hours a day every day of the year, including holidays, and they speak to a representative who is then going to dispatch that local contractor for them. So it really makes for a smooth experience for the homeowner in that we handle everything, and once the work is complete, we even pay the contractor directly, so the homeowner's not going out of pocket and then waiting to be reimbursed for the services. We use local contractors because the requirement is that all repairs are done up to code. Local contractors know what the codes are, they know what permits need to be pulled, so Public Works knows what kind of work is being done. There's a record of everything, and all the, the contractors that we work with, all of our contractors, they go through a pretty rigorous vetting process where we make sure that they meet all state, county, and any kind of local ordinances or licenses that they might need to be able to perform the services, and then we even do background checks and drug screens on the individuals that do the work as well. So we take that very seriously as far as putting reputable people into the community to do the work. We offer three separate products. There's external water line coverage, external sewer line coverage, and also an in-home plumbing product. I'll cover the two external products together just because they're set up the same, so what that's going to provide is up to $8,500 per repair incident, so every time they have a problem, up to $8,500 is available to address that issue, and that's for repair or replacement of broken, cracked, leaking pipes, tree root penetration, frozen water lines that need to be thawed out, clogs that need to be cleared, any of those types of things, and that covers that entire point from the foundation of the home to the point of the utility connection, so that whole no man's land, if you will, that they're responsible for is taken care of by the service. The in-home plumbing product is set up similarly, this is for all water, sewer, and drain lines that are inside the home. This is going to provide up to $3,000 per incident, and this even includes clogged toilets or lines that are embedded in a concrete slab or underneath the concrete as well. For all of our coverages, there's no annual limit or lifetime limit, there's no deductible anybody has to meet before the coverage begins, there's no service fee, so when we dispatch the contractor, they're not paying an additional service fee to have the contractor come out, which is nice because if it turns out that it's not on their side, they're not on the hook for any dollar amount, and the contractor's going to inform the city that they found that the issue is on the city's side of the responsibility. And there's no forms or paperwork because, again, we pay the contractors directly when the work is performed. Homeowners are able to opt in or out at any time without penalty, there's no pre-home inspection after a 30-day waiting period, the coverage would begin for them, and we offer affordable rates and multiple payment options so they can set things up as they would like. I mentioned that there's that revenue share that cities can participate in, and the way that works is there's a non-tax revenue of 10% per product per month that would accrue throughout the course of the year, and every January we pay that out to cities that participate in that aspect. You can use those funds for any city initiatives that you see fit. The number one, by far and away, is low-income utility assistance programs. Those are the ones that are most used. But again, you can use it any way you'd like, it's optional. If you opt out of that aspect of the program, the price of each one of the products decreases by 50 cents for homeowners that choose to participate, so if the city passes on the revenue, we pass savings on to homeowners who participate. Again, the goal is to reduce the number of calls the city receives from people when they have problems. By paying contractors directly, we're infusing money into the local economy, and we're also saving residents money that they're reinvesting in the local economy in different ways, and obviously the timely repairs as well. So customers are a priority now, instead of waiting weeks for a contractor to come out, things are typically taken care of in one to two days, depending on the extent of the issue, of course. The way we market is completely by direct mail, so there are no telemarketers, there are no door-to-door salespeople. We have a maximum of three mailing campaigns that we do per year in any community. The information that we send out informs homeowners what their responsibility is, lets them know that these programs are voluntary and separate, and it lets them know that it's not the city that's providing it, that we're providing it through a partnership with the city, that's why it's available to them. So with that partnership, one of the things that is involved is the transparency, and we provide the communications to the city for review, input, and approval before they're sent to any homeowners. So you get to see not only the message, but have input on what that message says, and ultimately when it's going to go out by giving your approval for it. What we ask for in exchange in this partnership is use of the city logo on the materials to, one, create that transparency, but, two, to maximize the proactive education. So really, you know, the participation is going to be somewhere around 15 to 20% on the higher end, so most people aren't going to participate, but at least they're going to be educated that it's their responsibility, and that's the important thing, that's really what we're trying to achieve. And again, it creates an economy of scale as well that allows us to offer the maximum benefits at the lowest possible price without service fees and deductibles and so on, so that gives us the opportunity to provide something that's truly of value to a homeowner, not just a Band-Aid, but a fix. Just kind of some odds and ends, we're currently partnered with over 1,100 municipalities and utilities across North America. As of right now, we have over 4.7 million customers. Just in the last three years alone, we've done 1.71 million repairs and saved those homeowners $638 million in the process, and we have a customer, a continuous customer satisfaction rating of 98%, and this encompasses everything, not just the work, but how we handle the calls, any email correspondences, any kind of customer-facing transaction that takes place is in that rating. Here are a list of our current Minnesota partners, and for some reason, there we go, monitors back up. So we're currently working with 37 communities in Minnesota, we've done over 3,700 service line repair jobs, I think that's just in the last three years, and as of today or this date, we've saved Minnesota homeowners over 3.5 million in those repair costs, so that's money they would have had to pay out of their own pockets instead of having us take care of that for them. And then just kind of, to summarize or in a nutshell, what it is that we do is we're helping residents understand what that responsibility is before they have an issue and giving them an opportunity to choose how to prepare for that issue. So it helps increase the quality of life in the community where it's available by giving them that option and helping them when they need it the most, while also reducing the number of distress calls that the city would receive from people when they have those issues. And with that being said, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any that you may have.
Well, Dennis, thank you for coming out to our beautiful city, I hope you enjoyed your drive out, and I hope you get back before the heat hits tomorrow, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyways, well, when you guys contacted me earlier this year, you know, as I mentioned on the phone call we had, is, you know, we've had citizens that have talked to us about, you know, there's really no option to provide this, so that's why I asked the administrator to bring you guys in, and I know you guys had a more lengthy conversation with Ms. Valiant than you did with myself, but, so thank you for being here. So councilor, any questions you guys have for Mr. Lyon? Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the presentation. Seems like a really unique type of insurance product that doesn't seem readily available, or at least I wasn't aware that that is available on the market. I'm personally aware of actually four or five different people that could have taken usage of this service within the last two to three years for repairs that cost them tens of thousands of dollars, and I think that you bring up a really good point that although these are private, it's, it's, it's on the homeowner to cover these costs, these systems are hooked up to our public utility. So the way that I see it, giving the option to repair some of these breakages and whatnot is, is also helping repair our network, our utility system. So it seems, I, I don't really see any downsides to the program or to the options, I'm interested to hear what maybe any other counselors think about that, but it doesn't seem like there, there's much of a downside to a program, and it gives residents options for something that, like I said, I didn't know that this type of, of, you know, policy even existed, so thanks for being here.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Additional comments or questions from Mr. Lyon? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thanks for being here tonight, so I just have a couple of questions. Do you have any competitors?
Not that offer this type of service, no.
Okay, because I know over time, there's been a few people that had tree roots and they came to City Hall and found out, oh, that's their expense, and they weren't happy, but, and what kind of a price range is a policy? I'm sure you have different programs than, three different ones, or?
Yes, so, and that's a great question, so there's three different price points for each, there's two different price points for each of the different programs, depending upon whether or not you would participate in that revenue share. The pricing is not individualized by community, it's, I can't remember the insurance term for it, but regionally rated, I guess, if you will. So water coverage with, and I'll give you the non-royalty prices first, though, so the water coverage is $5.25 a month for the service, sewer coverage is $7.25 a month, and the in-home plumbing would be $9.49 a month, and again, those three programs are completely separate, so homeowners can à la carte, choose whatever they would like. Each of those prices would increase by 50 cents per month if the city were to participate in that revenue share, so $5.75, $7.75, and $9.99.
So it's pretty reasonable, then?
Yes. The idea is to make it affordable enough to be able to provide the, the service aspect as well as the coverage aspect without somebody having to make a significant financial sacrifice, so really it helps folks that might not have any other option as far as resources to repair their water or sewer line.
So would that cover like a sprinkler system in the yard, or just the water that goes to the house?
That's a good question for clarification as well, so that's just the water and sewer line that connect from the utility to the home.
Okay. So you're not, you want us to approve you as someone that the city would trust?
Correct.
You want to use our name or our logo?
Correct.
In your policy.
To make it available in the community so homeowners are able to participate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, just a question on the billing, is that something that you work with utilities on to collect, or is it a separate billing?
We, when people enroll, we bill them directly.
Okay.
So it's really, once the program is implemented, the only city involvement is really when we send the materials to the city to be reviewed and approved before they're mailed out to homeowners.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilmember Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the presentation. To residents, could residents currently purchase the warranty, or is it necessary for the city to approve this arrangement before that would be offered to them?
Yes, so it's, it's available through the partnership, that's what allows us to reach the maximum number of people for the education and keep the benefit levels and the price points where they are.
But with no partnership, they could still purchase a warranty from you, this is just more to, to, to get your product out there in front of more people?
They, they would not be able to participate without the partnership.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember O'Brien.
A question I have, if emergency, quote, emergency comes up, which I have seen numerous times with sewer, for example, can they go ahead and get someone to take care of that problem if it's something that has to be done like right now and be reimbursed?
So we will, it ends up being kind of a time-consuming process for the contractor, because we have a team that actually will recruit local contractors to be part of our network, and part of that process is setting up electronic-type payments and doing all the paperwork and the, what are they, W9s or I9s or whatever, all those types of things, so that's all in place. So it does complicate it, but we do reimburse people. The idea is, you know, we have vetted this contractor, and that's our preferred network contractor to use in any community. Another side of that is when we network with a contractor, they will typically provide us, for lack of a better term, more of a home sale, or a wholesale, wholesale rate, which helps keep the cost down, so that fewer than 1% of our claims exceed that $8,500 amount. So we work to try to keep people from having to reach into their own pockets and exceed that maximum benefit per incident.
Are your contractors local?
Yes, yes, so when the city enters into an agreement. So, when the city enters into an agreement with us, we start that search right basically city center. I mean, there aren't very many plumbers that are located right in city center, but we start that at city center and radiate out as necessary. But we want to keep that as local as we possibly can. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback off of that last question, in those emergency-type situations, if there are local contractors that do provide those services, and I assume you'd be able to, your people will most likely be able to find them because they're not always readily available, there's not a large number of them, but most of the situations that I'm familiar with would be situations like sewage backups.
Yeah.
In those instances, the people want the problem taken care of quite quickly. So, hypothetically speaking, if you were to network with or link up with a contractor or provider that does typically offer those emergency service, services, then is it reasonable to say that the response time could be quite quick, given the fact that your call center is open twenty-four seven, three sixty-five?
Yes. So, when, and that's a great question. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to expand upon how the customer service aspect of it works. So, when the customer initiates that call, the requirement is that the contractor is on the phone with them within two hours to assess the situation and then be on-site as necessary as the emergency would dictate, or at least to provide some instruction in the meantime of here's what you need to do until I can have a guy out there. But again, our service, you know, our business really is service. Yeah, the coverage is something that's available, we're, you know, we're covering financially, but it's also the service aspect, which is what we're rated on. So, we strive to make sure that we're taking care of those incidents in a timely manner because of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from council? Can you go back to your list of cities, please?
Certainly. Let's see if I can figure out how to do that.
And then I'll get to my question. You cover the city of St. Louis Park. And as we all know, they had a pretty major incident that happened there within the last few months. Are you working collaboratively with the city of St. Louis Park to resolve that, those issues there, or can't you speak to that issue?
That is something that I would have to check on because I'm not aware. So, in the interest of full disclosure, I've been with the company for, November two thousand sixteen is when I started. I think I may have mentioned this when we spoke. My territory is the Pacific Northwest, but also Wisconsin. I lived most of my life in Wisconsin. Don't hate me for it.
Long as you're not a Packer fan.
No, I'm not. So, I actually root against them. So, if there are any Packers fans here, I'm sorry. But when you live there and everybody harasses you for not being a fan, you know, there's that little bit of schadenfreude of when the team doesn't do so well. Anyway, so, I've worked in Wisconsin since I started with the company, and my manager is actually the individual who covered the state of Minnesota for many years. And as she's ascending within the company, some of that territory has been ceded to me. So, I'm not familiar with that. Now, if that's something that is on the public side, I know it's not something that we would address. If it's something on the private side, it would, you know, be dependent upon whether or not those homeowners had our services in place. But I can check on that for you and get back to you. So, I apologize for not having.
Well, it was on the, it was on the public side, but it affected the private side as well, which is what caused the problems, so.
Can, can you?
They had a major backup, and actually, there's legislation that's being written currently to address what happened in St. Louis Park, because it's a pretty substantial loss.
So, sewage backing into homes?
Right.
So, there's, it's interesting you mention that because there's actually some insurance.
It was around a water main break along with, so, there was a lot of complicating factors to it.
So, there is, there is actually insurance that a lot of cities will carry. I don't know if it's available here or not, because again, I'm newer to Minnesota. That covers backups?
Not, yeah, we are insured through the League of Minnesota Cities, right?
Yeah, yeah. See, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities has that as well, where if, you know, the public works, has an issue that backs up into a private, you know, so if there's any of that, then that would be covered. If any of those lines were damaged and those were customer of ours, they probably have to look and see who was responsible for that damage. I know that we do things as far as helping out, because I work for a company that gives back to the communities where we participate. We do, we're referred pro bono jobs by our network contractors, and if people qualify financially, we'll take care of them. I can tell you in Boise, Idaho, about five months ago, there was someone who wasn't a customer of ours, but she had our coverage through her water provider, and she had a water line break, and she called them. And as it turned out, she had a copper rolled wire that was run over some pretty heavy, I don't know the numbers of the rocks that they used. I think the bigger ones are like two or three or whatever, but with some ground shifting that caused leaks all through this copper line, and it was a sixty-five-hundred-dollar pro bono job that we did for that person who wasn't even our customer, but she was a customer of the water company.
Sure. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I also see on the list that you work with a city public utilities, and I had asked this question before, if our utilities are aware that we're looking at doing this and if there is any crossover with services that are available through them. And I was just curious if we, they're aware that we're suggesting or promoting this?
Well, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? So, we have two questions, well, actually, three questions kind of in front of us. One is, do we want to participate in the program and then allow staff to work on the marketing side of it? And then the other thing would be, I don't know, maybe you have it in the car, I don't know. Crazy computer doesn't work, as you all know.
It's not. It's not listed on there.
Introduce the program to residents by becoming a program participant. Consider a similar program from another entity or to hold on what we want to do. And I think the other thing that we have to do is if we do want to participate, then do we want to do the cost share or the revenue share, I should say, which is fifty cents per service that they would provide? So, if there were three services, the person signed up for all three, it'd be an additional dollar fifty per month that the citizen would be charged. So, is there anybody who wishes to make a motion in regards to this, or what are your wishes, council?
I'd make a motion. I think we should support the program. I don't know about the fifty cents. It would be nice to see as many people as possible. I'm not quite sure on that one. You want that part of the motion too, then?
It's up to you, whichever, however you wish to make it. Maybe we should take the first one and see if that passes, and then if that passes, then we can see if we want to do the participation.
I'm fine with that.
So, motion has been made. I need a second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve offering the National League of Cities Warranty Program by HomeServe. Additional discussion, Councilmember Osmos.
Is there any city that did not approve using their city logo on your brochures?
Yes, we do have cities that decline that option. The program's not available there. So, I mean, we don't have a one-hundred-percent success rate, of course, when we introduce a program to community. So, for various reasons, they may decide that they don't want to go that route.
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for our city attorney. Is there any type of requirement in terms of legal disclosures that they would have to use if we are to authorize the usage of the city logo? Would you recommend or advise any sort of legal disclosure informing the public that this is not being offered by the city? It's more, this is a private thing. Do you see any reason for the city to make that statement?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, council. I assume there would be a membership agreement if the city were to approve this program, which obviously I think we would need to look at just to see what are the terms on which you are licensing this organization to use the city's logo. So, I think the answer is we'd have to look at that pretty closely. I don't know if there's opportunities to negotiate the language or not, and it looks like there is. So, I think that would be a second-order action after, if the council were to approve it, we'd certainly then have to look at that issue.
Okay. I would assume they've probably dotted their i's and crossed their t's on this before, so, thank you.
Additional comments or questions to the motion? All in favor of the motion to approve offering the National League of Cities Warranty Program by HomeServe to our citizens, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next, a consideration of using the city logo and the fifty cent, I suppose they should be separate probably, using the city logo in their advertising.
I would make the motion authorizing said entity to utilize the Wilmer city logo within their marketing materials.
Any legal review?
Pending legal review, that's.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Was made and seconded. Questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, the fifty cent per product revenue share. Is there an appetite from the council to do that, or are you wanting to keep it as cost-effective as possible to the citizenry?
I'd make a motion to keep it as cost-effective and not to collect the fifty cent.
Second.
So, if we're not going to do it, do we need the motion? That's my question. Motion been made and seconded. Discussion, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's really hard to hit on dollar figures because there's a lot of math, but you mentioned somewheres in the average of ten to fifteen percentage adoption rate and whatnot. Any sort of idea or calculation, what kind of dollars that fund could be maybe annualized? Because I think that would give us a better idea, because there are, obviously, there's some unique opportunities that could be collaborations between the city and the utilities or whatnot for the usage of those funds. So, it would be, I guess I'm just wondering in blunt speak, is it even worth it?
Some hypotheticals.
Yeah. Is it worth it? Is it a large enough amount of money that's going to equal anything that can materialize into anything? Or is keeping the cost as low as possible paramount?
Yeah. So, just to give you kind of a rough estimate, and again, as you mentioned, it is hard to predict, you know? Some communities come in above average, some come in below average. But our average as a company of policies per household is right like one point eight seven or something. You have to understand with as many partners as we have, those numbers get a little wonky. So, you're talking a little under two policies per household, I think, here. And I'm terrible at math, so I'm throwing these numbers out, hoping the mathematician in the room will speak up. Once I do, I think there's about eight thousand households here. So, I would say safely, you might want to look at about ten to fifteen percent, and anything above that would be bonus. So, ten percent of eight thousand households at roughly two policies per household comes to, where's my math people?
About sixteen hundred?
Okay, so about sixteen hundred to two thousand might be your range per year.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Additional comments to the question? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is just for homeowners?
Correct. This is residential.
If you have a duplex or a fourplex?
So, that is, I think that's something that we discussed, and it's really determined by the line size and if the lines are shared and at what point they come together. So, that's, when people enroll, that's part of that screening process to make sure that we're not enrolling people that may not qualify because they live in, say, a ten-unit condo or something like that where there's going to be a commercial-sized line.
Okay. And then, no commercial businesses? You don't have a policy for them, or?
Correct. We do not. That is something they've been talking about for years, but there's so many variables that it's really hard for our underwriters to get that dialed in. They've struggled with it for a long time. We keep asking, when, when?
All right. Thank you.
So, okay. So, the motion is to not participate in the cost share. Additional discussion to the question. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. So, go ahead and work with our staff and look forward to a product that you bring forward. So, congratulations, and I know that our citizens have been asking for this, and so I think it's a good product that we'll be able to offer our citizens. I remember the last people that were to council and talking about this, it's been a number of years ago, Councilwoman Plowman, you might remember when it was, but they were quite adamant that if anything like this was ever available, that we should pursue looking at it. So, thank you for bringing your product to us, so.
Excellent. It's my pleasure. Thank you all so much for having me. I appreciate the consideration. I'll get revised, updated copies of the agreement to you so that you can move forward with reviewing and suggesting any red lines, and we can move forward from there. Thank you all very much. I have one question, actually. Where is a good local place to eat dinner? Because I'm hungry.
You want us to say that publicly?
Well, you want to write it on a whiteboard and hold it up, maybe?
Talk to Gary. He'll hook you up with something.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Have a good day. You bet. All of our local places are good to eat.
Well, of course they are. This is a good precaution.
Next, we have a consideration of a Transportation Economic Development grant application for infrastructure improvements to facility and to facilitate the next three sixty intermodal facility. Mr. Backman, our EDC.
Good evening, Aaron Backman with the EDC. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, over the past seven months, the EDC has been working with Nexus Three Sixty and other partners on an agriculture distribution complex that would be located west of the new FedEx Distribution Center. In April, the city council approved, as you know, the Early Access Agreement intended to allow Nexus Three Sixty temporary access to the project property for purposes of conducting studies. Proposed project area encompasses about one hundred and thirty-seven acres of land owned by the city of Wilmer, as is shown on the attached layout, and you should have this in your packet. The site would include a shipping container loading facility, a bulk storage facility, two rail loops to accommodate unit trains, and two rail spurs to accommodate future growth in the Wilmer Industrial Park, all total about three point six miles of rail. Access to the site would be from the north side of Highway Forty. Total capital investment is anticipated to be over forty million dollars and job creation at over fifty jobs. To facilitate the development of the Nexus project, the EDC is pursuing state infrastructure funding through the Transportation Economic Development Program, a competitive grant program. The pre-app or expression of interest was due at the end of June, so I submitted that on June twenty-ninth on time. On July seventh, I was notified that Wilmer was being invited to submit a full TED application, which is due on September second, so about a month from now. So, we made the first cut. Several people were not deemed eligible, were kicked out, and now we're down to the final app. Wilmer is one of only five cities in the state of Minnesota that are in this position. The state of Minnesota requires a local match for the TED Grant Program. The pre-app, which was deemed eligible by Mindot in St. Paul, shows a sixty-forty split, that is sixty percent grant and forty percent local contribution. Bolton and Mink, whom I've been working with steadily during this process, has estimated the total cost of a five-hundred-foot turn lane and a one thousand four hundred and ten acceleration lane would be approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm rounding here, but five hundred and seventy thousand would be from TED, three hundred and eighty thousand from the city. The Wilmer's contribution would come from the land sale proceeds. And if you recollect previously, we were pricing this at eight thousand an acre, times the one thirty-seven is one point one million dollars that would go into the Industrial Park Fund. To move ahead tonight, the city needs to adopt a resolution of support for authorizing the TED Grant Application. And I would be happy to stand for questions. With me tonight is also Wes Sanda. He is off to my right here. He is a partner with Realm Five. Realm Five is an investment group. Uh, they have acquired the assets of, uh, Nexus Three Sixty. They've invested in several different projects, they have the capacity to do this, uh, and, uh, he would be happy to answer questions that you might have as well. In terms of process, um, I would, I would like to get the resolution, uh, approved so that I can include that resolution of support in the, uh, full app.
Council?
I'll make that motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution and submittal of a Transportation Economic Development Grant Application for infrastructure improvements on Minnesota Highway Forty to facilitate the construction of the Nexus Three Sixty Intermodal Facility. Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Mr. Backman, um, so as we travel down this path, everything's looking very favorable, correct?
Thus far.
Okay, and, um, of the amount of grant awards that there are from the state, how many local, uh, or how many statewide dollars are there? And then how does our numbers compare with the other people that are applying for similar funding?
Right, uh, very good question, Mr. Mayor. There's approximately two million dollars that's available statewide for greater Minnesota communities. Uh, there are five applicants, two of those are in this region of District Eight. The other four are scattered around this, this state. I have been, I have not, I've been told who those competitors are, but one of these days I will find out, um, and.
I would guess so.
Uh, and so, uh, my estimation at this point is that they'll be probably able to fund three of those. I wanna be one of the three. Uh, and we are asking basically for a little bit more than a quarter of the funds. So, I think our odds are not too bad.
Okay, additional comments or questions? Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as always, well, in the recent past, you've been here with only good news, so thank you for the continued, uh, the continued work on this. This seems like a perfect, it seems like a perfect fit for Wilmer, for our agribusiness community, um, for the expansion with the Wilmer Y that we worked tediously for years and years and years on. It seems like the placement is almo, it seems like almost everything perfect coming together, so I appreciate you, uh, bringing this forward and keeping it on the, on the front burner, and I'm hoping that with our vote tonight, that, uh, you can move forward to the next process of, of vetting, so to speak, um, with that much more enthusiasm, cause I, I think this is perfect for our industrial park expansion and for the greater region. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Well, Aaron, um, I think we're ready to vote. I, I'm, I'm thinking your vote might be okay, I'm not sure though. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Asmus?
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero knees?
That, uh, resolution passes with unanimous support. Again, thank you for the good work, um, we look forward to this project, uh. Uh, I, I drove out over the site on, uh, Saturday just to kinda take a look at where we're looking out there and, and that, that rail bed is looking real nice. Off to the north side, it's a little confusing at this point, but I'm sure they're gonna do some more ground shaping out there, but, um, down towards the south. Um, just a, it's coming out of left field here, but what do you think the chances are that we're gonna be able to get that, um, legislative funding for bonding for improving that roadway, uh, down on Cutter Road Five, Fifty-Five down in that area?
Uh, well, uh, my crystal ball's a little bit cloudy on that, uh, we'll have to see what happens. I guess I'm being a little bit cautious in that, but, uh, I think, um, the state has invested a lot of money. Uh, yeah, you know, uh, Mindot has invested a lot of money, uh, we'll have to see what, in, in the Y project, for example. We'll just have to see what happens in that regard.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the approval of financial participation in the countywide housing study to be undertaken by Viewpoint Consulting Group. Mr. Backman, again.
The last housing study encompassing all of Candy Ojai County was undertaken by Community Partners Research in twenty fifteen. They completed in September of that year. The relevance of such studies is typically about three years. The EDC has used the housing study regularly and has provided it to housing developers and other people. But a lot has changed in the last seven years, especially in Wilmer, and I believe, uh, that, uh, there is a need to have a new study that will benefit both the city of Wilmer and Candy Ojai County. The benefits of having a current housing study include identifying housing needs and gaps in the housing stock, providing information for decision-making, supporting programs and projects that address housing needs, assisting in obtaining grants and other financing, mobilizing developers and builders to invest in the local communities and providing strategies and recommendations. Finding a company to conduct the housing study has been challenging. Uh, with me tonight is Jill, um, Bankston with the HRA. Uh, she approached quite a few companies, uh, and they reached out, or she, uh, the HRA reached out to them, and they were either not available or not interested. I was able to talk to Jay Thompson, President of Viewpoint Consulting. Uh, I've worked with him before and found him to be responsive and thorough. Uh, he is available and can complete the report within a hundred and twenty days at a cost of forty-eight thousand for the whole county, including all twelve incorporated cities. It should be noted that the twenty fifteen study costed, uh, at that time, thirty-seven thousand. On July fourteenth, the EDC's Joint Operations Board unanimously voted to enter into agreement with Viewpoint Consulting to complete a housing study subject to financial participation by other entities, including the city of Wilmer. Jill is planning, um, to, uh, present a request to the HRA board, uh, in the near future. The EDC respectfully, and, and that amount, uh, that she's going to be proposing, I believe, is twenty-four thousand. The EDC is respectfully requesting an amount of twelve thousand, uh, from the city of Wilmer to be contributed toward the cost of the study. In addition, um, I should also point out that Sue Blumhofer, who is with the West Central Association of Realtors, is pursuing a housing opportunity grant of ten thousand dollars. If successful, the grant would provide, uh, additional resources, uh, to, toward the cost of the housing study. Any remaining costs of the study would be paid for by the EDC.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the financial participation by the city of Wilmer in a new countryside housing study to be undertaken this year by Viewpoint Consulting Group. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Ask?
Um, so this is a, a housing study for the county, but.
Encompassing, um, all areas of the county, so Wilmer and, uh, New London, Spicer, and so forth.
So, right, and the county's not contributing financially, nor the other eleven communities that would be surveyed, uh, in the study?
Right, the, the HRA is obviously encompassing more than just Wilmer, it covers a broader area and has interests in other communities as well. So, uh, uh, right now, uh, the, that's the proposal that we have right now is with the HRA paying for fifty percent of it. I'd like to have the city, the largest city in the county, of course, uh, which has seen, uh, been seeing a fair amount of development to, uh, participate, uh, for the twelve thousand. If we are successful with the grant, there really wouldn't be a need at that point to go to the county.
Additional comments or questions? I think Councilmember Ask brings up an important and a good point, and I know the EDC is jointly funded by the county and the city as well, as well as the HRA. Um, you know, the cou, the county has a, that has a pretty good track record of helping people outside of Wilmer. Um, and they do a pretty good job of that. Um, not quite so good in Wilmer. Um, and, uh, you know, that is, that is concerning, it's been a concern of mine for about the last three years. Um, and, uh, you know, if you take a look at the ARPA funds, the majority of those ARPA funds are being spent outside of the city of Wilmer. Um, and very little is being done. We take a look at the local option sales tax projects, very little has been done in the city of Wilmer. You take a look at the, uh, vehicle permit, uh, fees, uh, I don't think they've used any of those dollars in Wilmer. Um, so that's very concerning. Uh, as you stated earlier, the biggest city in, in, in the county, um, maybe it's time we start getting scratched on our back a little bit, too. I mean, and, and I know what's good for Candy County is good for Wilmer, but, you know, maybe it's time to, the county commissioners take a look and say, maybe we can help the city of Wilmer a little bit, too, so. I, I share some of those concerns, uh, maybe a little bit stronger than what your, your points were, but, um, but I do think that we need this, um, you know, we need to have this study done. Uh, we can't go after a lot of the, the grants, a lot of the funding sources if we have old data. Uh, I met with Jill, I believe it was last week or the week before, and talked about the need for this, and it, it's a very integral piece of, of bringing the next housing boom to Wilmer. You know, we've got the Mayor's Housing Task Force out there right now, that, that work hasn't, uh, been concluded yet, but we hope to have that work con, concluded within the next month. I think that this would be advantageous for that report as well, so. I think there's a lot of good things here, and, uh, I guess if we wanna be progressive and move forward, um, I think we need to really support this, so. I speak in favor of the motion, Councilmember Nelson.
I speak in favor of doing the countywide hous, housing study. Um, just a clarification, though, I, I know when you presented it to the, um, Vision Twenty Forty Housing Group, um, you were concerned about needing information from Wilmer quickly. We carried the message of, that it needed to be countywide in order for the HRA to be involved, et cetera. So just clarify for me, the EDC's contribution to this, if we give you, I'm just trying to, cause the last sentence says, you know, if we don't get the grant or if we get the grant, so what will the EDC's contribution be? Because it is both city and county that you are contributing for, so. Um, I had originally thought that, that you had carried the message that we would split it fifty-fifty with the HRA, so.
Right, uh, Councilmember Nelson, uh, what I would say is that, uh, certainly, I got the message from the Vision Twenty Forty Housing Subcommittee that it should be, uh, countywide. Uh, the original proposal, even before this one, was it was gonna be just Wilmer and, uh, two other cities. Uh, and, uh, I think the consensus of the group was, no, we really need to have the whole county. We need information on the whole county. Um, in terms of, uh, financial participation, if the grant comes, EDC's, uh, participation would be two thousand dollars. If it doesn't, well then, uh, we would have to contribute more. Uh, at that point, I would have to also look, uh, going back to the county to see if they'd be willing to look at some, perhaps some ARPA dollars as well.
Okay, so your board has basically not authorized you to contribute money?
The board was, understood that we would be looking at about two thousand.
Okay.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Asmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Nay.
Seven eyes, one knee.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a consideration of an adoption, uh, Aaron, thank you for your work, Jill, thank you for your work. Really do appreciate what you guys are doing, and, uh, housing is a real critical issue in Wilmer, as you guys both know more than I do even, so. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have consideration of proposed timeline for tax income financing for unique opportunities. Mr. Walker?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. And so tonight's really just a formality to introduce the proposed timeline for, uh, proposed TIF project. I just wanna clarify that tonight is not the consideration of the TIF project. Tonight is not an explanation of the finances of the TIF project. This is really just a formality to introduce the timeline of the various approvals, the letters that need to be sent out, the notices that need to be sent out, and to get the process started. That way, there can be consideration of the finances and explanation of the finances and, uh, in-depth analysis of every aspect of the project and the time for questions, um, at a later date. So really, tonight's really just a introduction, uh, as a formality, uh, to get the ball rolling, to start the timeline on some of these things, um, to deliver the development. And so I guess, just clarity purposes, um, uh, this project was, uh, I think is currently working its way through the Planning Commission, uh, in various aspects. Uh, I think this was also brought before council, uh, I think earlier, uh, this year, I think about a month ago or so. But, yeah, so like I said, this is really just, uh, formality to introduce the proposed timeline for the notifications and the considerations and the in-depth analysis that will later follow. I think at, um, past introductions have included a little more in-depth analysis, but that will come at the next city council meeting on August fifteenth, and that will have our presentation from Baker Tilly, that will have the but-for analysis, um, and all the financial, um, question, all the financial answers that I think you guys will probably have, or questions that you guys have.
Motion to adopt the proposed TIF timeline for the unique opportunities TIP, uh, TIF application.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
Clarification, this is the gentleman who came to our work session and presented, correct?
Correct, yeah, so this is the development on Lakeland Drive, uh, the developer of unique opportunities, um, Mr. Samuel Herzog.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Asmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero knees?
That motion passes. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to rezone Rockstep Plaza Second Edition from shopping center to general business. Mr. Walker?
Yes, so I think it was several weeks ago where we brought forth the rezoning of the Slim Chickens, uh, the Slim Chicken, Slim Chicken Platt, uh, of, a part of like the larger Rockstep Mall, uh, the larger Rockstep property, a part of the, um, Uptown Wilmer. And, uh, one of the comments from council was that you guys would like to see, instead of these piecemeal rezonings, you guys would like to see a whole, whole-scale rezoning, and I said that was something that was in the works, that was something that we communicated to them that we would like to see in the near future, and they agreed, and so this is something that they are working towards. Um, and so tonight is the introduction of the rezoning for the ordinance and to introduce the date for the public hearing to rezone the entire mall lot. I think this was something that we talked about at the Planning Commission level, and we talked about internally with staff, that we would like to see dissolving the shopping center district. We saw like a lot of overlap and not really a need for it, especially when the main, uh, people in the shopping center district kept coming to us for countless rezone applications and countless requests, and so we were just kinda like, if you can just rezone this entire thing and save everyone time, uh, that'd be greatly appreciated. So tonight is really just introducing, um, like I said, just introducing the ordinance and setting the public hearing. That way, if anyone can come forward with any questions and talk about it, so.
Make a motion to approve, or set up a public hearing for August fifteenth?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
Um, I'm supportive of doing this, but do we not have another shopping district on the other side of the road?
We do, and they are also going to rezone, so.
Okay, so this, but this one is just specific to.
Right, so this is just, uh, Uptown Wilmer, this is the one on the east side of First Street. Um, I guess Skylark Mall, like I said, they've been in contact with staff about the possibility to rezone. They are open to it, and they are working on the application. They didn't think that they'd be able to get the application submitted, uh, for this Planning Commission meeting, and maybe not the next one, but I think that's something that will be on its way in September.
Okay, so that would fit in with kind of the recommendations you've been talking about, this being outdated.
Yeah, certainly, certainly, cause there, like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of usage overlaps, and like I said, we get a lot of requests from them to just constantly rezone things. And so instead of doing that, we'd rather them just rezone it all, and it will eventually, and I, I, I think later down the road, we, we've kinda made it clear to them and to Skylark Mall that we're willing to work with them about what we see for the future of the general business district, and eventually kinda splitting it into different districts and kinda having a higher intensity retail that'll have a multitude of uses, ones that are favorable to how they see the future of redevelopment for malls. And so that's something that we, we wanna have an inclusive conversation with them and other property owners on First Street, and so that's something that they've been receptive to, and that's why they're willing to rezone, so.
Are those the only two we have? We don't have them anywhere else.
Correct, yeah, those are the only two big pockets of shopping center in, um, the city of Wilmer.
Thank you for that information.
Additional comments or questions? All in favor of the motion to set a public hearing for August fifteenth for the rezoning, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Next, we have consideration, uh, to introduce an ordinance for the. an ordinance for the sale of real property to Justin Pathrath. Again, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, it's just myself, Mr. Pathrath, I apologize for not being able to be here tonight. He had a prior engagement, or he would have been here this evening. And so the, as you guys know, this has kind of been in the works for a while, kind of looking at the property, the potential price, looking at the project and different kind of things. And so I guess, for clarity purposes, tonight is really just the land sale. This is not the approval of a project. This is not the consideration of a project. This is just selling the land for the listed price. And the planning commission looked over and approved it, and it is now coming to you all to approve the land sale. Like I said, this is not the consideration of the project. I think at a later date, the PUD has to be worked on with staff. The PUD has to go through the planning commission, and the PUD still has to come to council for approval. And so like I said, at all of those iterations of the project, there will be input, and there will be guidance from us. There will be input from the planning commission, and all of those things have to be taken into consideration. Like I said, the PUD kind of delivers total control and discretion of each of those steps. So if there are any caveats that you guys want, or any things that you guys would like to see happen in the project, that can be communicated later in the, later in the process to make sure that they happen.
Okay. I thought we were going to have maps of the proposed property?
Yeah, I thought we.
You have those?
Yeah, I thought we got those in the packet. Yeah, they should be on page 128. No, 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 not that one. Not that one.
That's not the right one.
It's page 128.
Yeah, 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 it's 128.
It was updated this afternoon.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so it would have, that would have been this afternoon, but yeah, it's like 128. So it's on that packet, isn't it?
It, I believe.
It was 128 in my packet.
I believe it's on the back of the planning, it's in the, the map is in the planning commission minutes. Am I not correct, also?
That may be true, but like, we did update, we did update it in the box this afternoon to make sure that there was a map included in the packet.
Yeah, no, but I thought in the minutes that we got, there was a map. I don't know if it's the same map. Yeah.
Page 20.
Page 20.
Electronic, page 26.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Can I ask a clarification first? Did you say the land sale still needs to be approved by the planning commission, or did you say the planning commission has approved the land sale?
The planning commission has already approved the land sale.
But not the project?
No, not the project. The project's supposed to go through every step of the phase.
Are we waiting on a motion? Motion to introduce the ordinance authorizing sale of property and set public hearing for August 15th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second of discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I believe that your documents stated that you had worked with the city attorney on the purchase agreement, correct?
Yep, correct. And so the purchase agreement that is submitted tonight, I think initially the Justin Pathrath submitted a purchase agreement, and then the city attorney put the purchase agreement in the format of the specific cities of ours, and then he agreed to that. He agreed to those terms.
The one question that I was asked today about this purchase agreement, and maybe the city attorney could review it, is there is some, I think, unique language in there about option to repurchase, and a timeframe with, within where he needs to do that, or where we can repurchase. I'm just wondering if we can just walk through those clarifications? Because the one thing that was said to me is that this project might take longer than two years, and I believe that what's in here is, is a two-year repurchase option. Am I correct?
Yes, so I, I can't speak to the, to the.
Let's defer to the city attorney. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A standard term when the city is selling property to facilitate a project is to include that sort of a conditional option to repurchase so that if the project doesn't materialize within some period of time, the city, if it wants to at the time, is able to basically unwind the transaction, refund whatever money it received as a purchase price, and reacquire the property. And the reason to include a provision like that is to make sure that, again, if it's to facilitate a project, that the project actually happens, and if it doesn't, that the city hasn't just lost any right to control development on that site going forward. Certainly, if there's a specific concern about the time period used in this draft, we can adjust it. It's not intended to be, it's intended to actually provide some cushion for the developer. So that's certainly something we can look at.
Do you think two years with the project that he's being, that he's proposing, and the work that still needs to be done with PUD and all those things, is long enough? Or do you think it should be extended to protect both him and the city?
Honestly, Mayor, council on that one, I would just follow lead of staff and the developer on what their reasonable expectations are, and then try and give it a little bit longer time than that even, so.
He hopes to start construction next summer, and so I think probably complete construction late fall next year, early spring for sure.
So you're comfortable with the two years, or would it be better for us to bump it up a year?
I'm comfortable with the two years. I think he's, he's been, I think the thing he was concerned about was that the project had to be completed in a year, and he was like, that's not going to happen. So I think, I think two years is reasonable.
Okay.
Additional comments or questions? So again, we're setting the public hearing for August 15th, and I'm assuming that at that time, we'll have some greater detail. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does pass. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next, we have consider declaring equipment as surplus property in completion of a purchase agreement to qualified buyer. Mr. Box.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is my first action.
Your first action.
Unanimous support would be appreciated.
Right.
Boy, you're setting us up, aren't you? I can only hope, right? So in your background material this evening, staff is asking for specific equipment to be declared as surplus property. This equipment is located in the city auditorium basement gun range. Staff did a little digging, evaluated that the equipment is very used, but still has some life to it. Staff have been approached by a potential qualified bidder that has maybe a new purpose for this equipment. It's not being used now, so we're looking at potentially getting some more use out of it with some, through somebody else. So what we're asking is that we declare this equipment as surplus property, and with that, there is also a purchase agreement in there that was reviewed and, or drafted and reviewed by the city attorney. There's a unique aspect to this is that the, the equipment needs to be cleaned, removed and/or cleaned by a blood abatement firm. This would be the responsible, responsibility of the buyer. So those are the asks of staff this evening. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Do, did you, did you say we have a qualified buyer at this time?
There's an interested party, yes. Well, this will go out, so what we'll do if it is approved by council with the, we will go on a public bid, so this will be opened up for more than anybody would be able to bid on this.
Okay, that, that was my understanding, in that I thought I heard you say there was a qualified buyer, so.
Yes, that's what kind of prompted this action tonight.
Also, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve the sale.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second, you had a couple of them there, grab whichever one you want. So this is the, basically the equipment that is the indoor gun range, and we understand that there are some parameters around that for the removal of that property to be done safely and through a bid process on the sale. So, council, any discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Just, would you just clarify if I read somewhere, I think it's an online bidding process, is that correct? So what, how does that work, or who, or how are we doing that?
So the Public Works Department has utilized.
Open bid?
Gov bid. Gov bid and the, gov deals in the past. There are, there are multiple sites, but that's one that the city is familiar with. So we were able to have an account go on, and it would be open up to, to anybody that can go on and.
Okay.
And bid that. If there is a desire, we can certainly let the local or the interested party that approached the city know as well, and so that they're aware of the public bidding process.
And there's a timeframe that it's open, then? Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a minimum bid, then?
There can be. That would be, if you would like, like to set one, you're more than welcome to. We talked about that a little bit, or I kind of went back and forth with that, with the unknown, really unknown costs of the blood abatement. That's probably going to be a much more, much more of a cost than the equipment may be worth. So that's kind of the risk we're taking at this point.
But that cost will be to the buyer.
Correct. So if somebody offers a dollar, and we'll take it out for you, I mean, who knows? I don't, I don't know. If you want to set a minimum, we sure can. You always have the right to reject the bids.
I don't know what it's worth myself.
Right.
Councilmember Nelson.
I remember in the conversation before that our city attorney had advised us that we had to go through this process. So without setting a minimum bid, we're still meeting the requirements to do this legally, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Additional comments or questions? So I was contacted by the Wilmer Rifle and Pistol Club today, and they want to make sure that they get a copy of the bid.
Absolutely.
So they're, they're interested in the property as well, and I believe there's some private people that are also interested that have talked to me about it. So I think you probably have those names already, so. Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
No.
Ask.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That resolution passes. Next, we have acknowledgement of donations. Mr. Box, you did not get a unanimous, but you got a favorable. Next, we have an acknowledgement of donations for the second quarter of 2022. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, just to go through the recent donations that we received for the second quarter of 2022. For the summer movies in the park, we received $100 from Fisher Laser Eye Center, $100 Hanson Advertising, $500 from Hormel Financial Corporation, $500 from Marcus Construction, $500 from Northern Factory Sales Incorporated, $250 from Fraternal Order of Eagles, Area 2334, $200 from Dooley's Petroleum, $250 from Waltz, $250 from Perkins Lumber, and $250 from Cub Foods. For the youth soccer shirts, we received $250 from Marcus Construction. For police explorers and community emergency response team, $200 from the Spicer American Legion, and $50 from Karen Bjorki. For community kids summer camp, $200 from Waltz, $200 from Dooley's Petroleum, $200 from Genial Corporate Office, $300 from McQuinn Insurance Agency, $300 from Marcus Construction. For body armor in memory of Rick James, $50 from Carl Sorensen, $25 from Erlene Schulstad, $100 from Cynthia Cruna, $20 from Kathy Marcus, $20 from Kristy Morland, $20 from Ken Cameron, and $498 from Rita James.
Make a motion to approve the donations and send a card of thanks.
Second.
Motion made in second of discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes, and I also want to thank everybody for their donations and continued support for the city of Wilmer and the projects that we are going. So thank you so much for that. Next, we have an announcement of a city council work session for August 8th. Ms. Valiant.
Good evening, council. I would like to propose that we have a work session on the capital improvement plan for the 2023 budget, along with some discussion with staff regarding the 2023 budget and requests that they have on the new capital improvement plan. We would like to have this on Monday, August 8th, at the Fire Hall at, starting at 5:30.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion made in second of discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. We'll have a meeting August 8th at 5:30 PM. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any community pride announcements? Councilmember Butterfield.
Yeah, this past weekend, Wilmer's 14 U double A took first place in state baseball championship, and Wilmer's 11 AAA took second place. So kudos to, to both teams of finishing tops in the state.
Perfect, yeah. I've been, I've been watching them on Facebook. They've, some of those games have been live, and they've been a lot of fun to watch. They're really an energized group of kids, so, thank you very much. So additional comments or questions Well, as the council was informed today, we received a resignation from Janelle Summers, our administrative assistant to the city administrator, today. And Janelle has been with the city for about 38 years, and has worked very diligently in, in two different departments. She worked in the Public Works Department, and then most recently, after Audrey Peterson had left the city, she moved over to the position of administrative assistant to the city administrator. So Janelle has worked diligently for the city. She's done a very nice job, and her last day with the city will be on the 12th, and so we will not be meeting prior to her leaving. So, but from the mayor's office, I want to extend congratulations to her on a retirement well earned. She's put in a lot of years. She saw a lot of change for the city, and she's worked diligently through that position. So it'd be nice, Ms. Valiant, if she would come to our next council meeting, so we could show an appreciation to her. But if she wishes not to do that, we understand that as well, so. So Janelle, thank you for your work. Thank you for your tenacity, and thank you for all the things that you've done to make the city of Wilmer better, stronger, and a great place to live, work, and play. So with that, we are now going to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.05, sub 3, to consider offers or counter offers for the city's purchase and sale of real property. So at this time, if you are not part of the team that has been invited, we ask you to leave.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, she'll get that. Judy, you're getting, making sure the stuff's off? Judy, you're getting, making sure the stuff's off?
So, we're now going back into open session. Counselor, what are your wishes?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.